So we will call the organizational school board meeting for Monday, April 22, 2019, to order. And I will have Heidi. We have a meeting opening, and the first thing we want to do is have the oath of office for our three board members who were elected to the school board. So I think we'll have the three of you with Craig come out there and do the ceremonial oath of office.
In the middle?
In the middle, yeah.
Okay. I state your name.
I, Jeff Evil.
Have been elected or appointed to the school board of the Stevens Point area public school district.
To the school board of the Stevens Point area public school district.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you. Welcome to Ann Vang as you're starting your time with the board, and welcome back to Barb and Jeff as you're continuing your service to the community on the school board. So we move into item three, which is our roll call and verification of quorum. And Heidi, if you could do that for us?
Yes. Ms. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Daley?
Here.
Mr. Evil?
Here.
Ms. Vang?
Here.
Ms. Portson?
Here.
Ms. Rannow is running late. She should be here shortly. Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
Ms. Earler?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you.
All right, we will now do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we are moving into public five, item five, public comments. No one signed up to make comment for the board. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to make comment with respect to agenda items? No one is present. So we will move into item six, which is selection of temporary chairperson to preside for the election of president. This is something we do annually, and a temporary chair is to be named to conduct the election of board president. Traditionally, the superintendent is named by motion and second to temporarily preside during the nomination and election of the president. Do I have a motion?
Move to appoint Superintendent Gerlach as temporary chair.
Second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
For the next 30 seconds, I can feel the power. At this time, I will take nominations for school board president.
I'd like to nominate Meg Earler for president.
Meg Earler has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? And a third time, are there any other nominations for school board president? Hearing none and seeing none, we have one nomination for school board president. All in favor of Meg Earler serving for the next year as board president, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Meg, congratulations. You're board president for another year.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we will be moving on then to the election of vice president. Are there nominations for vice president for the school board?
I nominate Amy Daley.
Amy Daley is nominated.
I nominate Chris Scott.
Chris Scott is nominated. Are there any other nominations for vice president? Are there any other nominations for vice president? Hearing none, we have two nominations for vice president. Heidi will distribute ballots. Under Wisconsin law, we are able to vote by ballot. You are required to write the name of the person that you would like to nominate for vice president. You also need to initial it. This is an open records document, so after the election has happened, this is available for the community if someone would like to see how we voted. But in terms of tonight, it can be a secret ballot by statute. So if everyone could vote. One. Oh, wait. I need one. Heidi has one. Oh. Sorry. And when you are done, if you could hand your ballots to Heidi, she will be collecting them, and then she will tabulate them, and Craig will be there as the witness in the tabulation.
I'm going to talk tonight about changing the committees, right? Because that's in the timing and dates of timing of committees.
She will continue as board vice president.
Thank you.
And what was the vote?
It was six-two.
Okay. All right, if that can be noted. Okay, we are now moving on to recommendations for the position of clerk. Do I have a?
Barb Portson.
I have a nomination for Barb Portson as clerk. Are there any other nominations for clerk?
You were on this sheet.
No. Well, under my previous conversations we have with the board, you were to list any role you would be interested in.
Oh.
So I listed all the roles I would be willing to serve in.
Are there any other nominations for clerk? Having called that three times, we have a nomination for Barb Portson. That is the only nomination on the floor. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to treasurer. We are looking for nomination for treasurer. Do I have a nomination for the position of treasurer?
I'd like to nominate Amy Daley.
Are there any other nominations for treasurer? Are there any other nominations for treasurer? Having asked for nominations for three times, we have Amy Daley as the individual who has been nominated for treasurer, excuse me, for treasurer. So all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Amy is the treasurer. We are now moving on to appointment of board secretary. Could I have a motion to approve Heidi Sheple O'Brien as the school board secretary?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Amy and a second by Trish. Any discussion or questions? No, nobody wants?
Don't question that. Leave it alone.
All right. All those in favor of Heidi serving as the school board secretary with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, guys. You did a good job.
So we are now moving into the selection of board and committee meeting dates and times.
Not dates, just time.
Just, well, dates and, well, just kind of the start time and kind of what the committees are going to be. And Craig has asked for some time in front of the board with respect to this.
Yeah, thank you. I'm asking the board to consider a slight change to our committee structure. We've talked about this over the course of time, certainly we did last year, and I think you've been dabbled with it the year before, to combine the HR committee and our business services committee. Most times, if not all times, HR issues have financial complications or interest, if I Oftentimes, we are canceling an HR committee meeting because there just isn't any business to bring forward. And then I would suggest that, or recommend, we continue with educational services and our policy and legislate, legislation committee be eliminated. And we could have policy issues regarding HR and business services go directly to that committee. Oftentimes, when we have policy issues, they could go to various committees in terms of expertise. We obviously just went and revamped our policies. There will be changes to policies as it relates to legal updates, which really are updates that Heidi does. She runs them through cabinet. We bring them forward. They're updates that have to occur. And we could have certainly legislation issues be an agenda item on both committees. But again, it's your structure. It's just something to think about. Could also run both meetings in one night. We oftentimes have board members that want to attend the meetings from the other night. It might be more convenient for board members. So we will run our committees at the will of the board, but I just throw that out for conversation.
If I may. So for clarification, we would combine business services and HR, and we would have a chair for that committee. And then educational services would be a standalone committee. And then as far as policies, at one time, and this is, I think I'm understanding it, depending on what policy, what committee that would affect, that would then go on to that committee, whether it be educational services, HR, whatever, a policy that dealt with those issues from that committee would then be put on that agenda for discussion.
Correct.
Okay.
And of course, Amy is our treasurer. She would, she would chair, I'm assuming, as the treasurer, one of the responsibilities to chair the business services committee. There has not been anybody that showed interest of chairing the HR committee as of, is that true?
I did put that down.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I just make a comment too? And this is my fault because I answered the questions verbally as opposed to writing them down. On mine, it says no preference, and it says I don't want to do policy and legislation. And I, there was a miscommunication. I'm fine. If I need to, I will do anything. If you need me to chair polit, if we decide to do policy and legislation, I will be happy to chair it if that's necessary. So if someone wants, if Judy doesn't want to chair HR again, I will be happy to, or Chris can do it. I, I'll do whatever needs to be done. So plug me in wherever.
So those are decisions that you have to make. We had conversation last year. I brought up committee of the whole, and I am a fan of committee of the whole. We discussed committee issues last year, and we didn't make any change, there wasn't any consensus. And so about a half hour into discussion, you know, I declared, let's just continue business as usual. If we don't agree on a structural change, and it causes, you know, controversy, there's no sense in changing. I'm just throwing that out for conversation.
Barb?
I think it makes sense because HR, how many times did we meet?
I don't know, three, four, nine, three maybe.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. And they were short.
Right.
There was, you know, not that, I really liked the presentations part that Beth gave us.
Right. And you can still have those.
You can still continue that, yeah.
Yeah.
We may need to look at the length of time the meeting is. Is it an hour, still going to do it?
So one, so, so, so for me, the biggest, I would say, from an administration standpoint, the biggest question or concern that's been raised pretty much all year long was where should presentations be made? Because if there were full presentations made at the committee level, oftentimes, there was the reality, wait a minute, that, that presentation should have been made to the full board. The benefit of having this structure, if we're able to do it, is we would have, in some ways, the best of both worlds. We would have the ability to have both committee meetings, because we'd have two committees. We'd have both committee meetings on Monday night. Board members then would have the ability to be available for both board me, both meetings if they wanted to hear the presentations. We'd also still have the ability to have citizen committee input on those two committees. But then we also would then have the ability at the next board meeting to actually have more board members who had seen the full presentation at committee versus trying to decide whether things should happen at committee or board, or should happen at both meetings. We historically have not had citizen committee members on HR, but when we take a look at what has been on HR the last number of years, there's nothing that's confidential. There, I mean, I don't anticipate any time that there will be a matter in front of HR that couldn't involve citizen, non-board input. And actually, I think the board could benefit from input from citizen members with respect to substitute teachers, recruitment, retention, benefit opportunities, et cetera, et cetera. So it would actually add, I think, potentially add value to that committee.
We struggle administratively determining what should be on a committee agenda versus what should go to the full board. Oftentimes, we have presentations at committee meetings, and then there's a request to have it go to the full board because the content of the, of that, of that report, there's, there's great value to that. That's not efficient. If it's, if it's going to go to the same, if the same presentation's going to be given Monday night at a, at a committee meeting, and then it goes to the next Monday night at a board meeting, why don't we just do it at the board meeting? And so we've determined that, well, if there's content and discussion, discussion of the content of the committee meeting, that the committee may change the course of the direction, then it absolutely should go to a committee for discussion because it may or may not leave committee to go to the board. But throughout the course of the year at our cabinet meetings, I'll have cabinet members say, well, Craig, does that go to the committee, or do you want it to go right to the board? And, well, you know what? It should go to the committee, but I tell you, this one, I think the, someone's going to say the whole board should hear this. Then we should send it to the whole board, and then there's the risk of, well, why didn't that go to committee first? Because maybe there should have been discussion. So we weigh that each month. And sometimes, you know, we get it right, and other times, we're still questioning one another what goes on a committee level meeting and what goes on a board meeting. Therein lies the issue, the beauty of a committee of the whole. Everything goes for discussion and, or discussion and presentation at the committee of the whole, and the board meeting is just action items. However, that's, that is not, I know, necessarily maybe, there's not an interest by all on that. And it's, it is a significant change. I'm sorry, Jeff. I think there are times, if you're presenting historic data, I think that's one thing, it can be really interesting for us to set goals for the next year, or how we're going to deal with issues moving forward. But sometimes there are initiatives or new proposals that just might not be ready for prime time, that it'd be really good to have that discussion at the board. And I know there are a couple of things that we said, this isn't ready to run to the board yet. Let's, let's do our, a little more due diligence before we present it to the board. So, and I also like the opportunity to take two, two runs at it. You know, if they do the presentation at the committee, and it should be passed on, by all means, pass it on. But I do like that opportunity to kind of kick the tires and, you know, discuss it a little bit more in the, in the committee meetings.
Barb?
If we go to, to that format and just have our presentations at committee, I'd like to see it maybe taped, although, like you said, it's not necessarily in final form, but some of those are, are very interesting and should be interesting to our public.
That's why we bring them back to the board and still have that presentation again.
Oh, and still give the presentation twice.
Yes, right. But at least we'd have the ability, if we had it at committee first, if we felt that, well, it's not ready yet, you know, they, you got to take it back, you got to do a little more work, do a little more research, get your, your program organized, and then bring it back to us again.
Just can I make a comment to Barb's remark? One of the reasons we didn't put tape on that was people were a lot more comfortable in discussion whether, you know, you're bringing community members in. It was just a little more laid back discussing it at a committee when, when you get to the board and you're on TV. Now, if you're talking about just the presentation, but I think people are more comfortable having that kind of discussion, especially involving community members, not having that out there on TV, and then when it is ready, bringing it to the board. But that's how it started anyway.
So I think, for example, John Volendorf was in front of the committee last month with respect to kind of some, just kind of some ideas. And so from a, the benefit of having that ability to explore at the earlier stages, kind of broader ideas, and get input to gather that and be able to bring that back without the community getting worried that there are all these changes coming. It, it's from a board perspective, as we look to try to craft how we're moving forward, do we want to be able to be there on the ground floor of that, those initial conversations with the idea that, that those kind of creations, those explorations are happening at committee level with ongoing input? And to, in the event that we get to the point where we're really looking for the board to seriously look at, all right, here's the direction now we think we're moving in, now we've elevated it up to the board, then we have, we would still be able to have that opportunity within this structure. Trish?
I, I want to say, excuse me, I'm firmly in Jeff's camp of continuing the two meetings as, as they are for about six different reasons, quite a few. Number one, we, we tried this previously, long before you were superintendent, we had two meetings a month. And they were both videotaped, and we just ended up having two meetings a month.
Two school board meetings or a committee of the whole meeting and a school board meeting?
Well, they were board meetings.
Yeah. They was board meetings, but...
I'm not suggesting we have two board meetings.
Well, I think that the minute that you do...
It turned into a second board meeting.
Yeah. And one of the reasons, when we went through the process of deciding to bring committees back, one of the things that we all agreed upon was important, of course, it was a little different board back then, was that we would bring citizen members in. Now we have two citizen members, and we have some competition for those positions, which is really cool. We have a variety of people coming in on each of those committees. And those people, I look at Mike, Kurt Pulvermacher, I mean, there's, I could probably, if I could think fast, think of about six, six different people that have been on committees, and so it opens it up for more opportunities, and it gives more people an opportunity to think about whether they might want to join the board and run for office, like Kurt did this last time, like Mike has done. That's like, Dan, yeah. So, you know, first of all, I think that that's really important. The other thing is, is that we have a different attitude in committees. You know, the minute that we turn Mr. Cameron over here, you know, we become much more formal and much more careful about what we say and how we present ourselves. When we're in committees, we're a little bit more laid back. We're, I think our presenters are a little more, feel, feel a little freer to make a mistake or to blue-sky some ideas, to do a little brainstorming, and we have much more free-flow conversations. And, you know, not to say that the, the public is always welcome to come and join our committee meetings, but, but I think that it's a really different atmosphere. And I, I love the fact that so many members of cabinet are here along with members of the public sitting on, sitting on the board. So I, I really like that idea of bringing members of the community in. And I guess the last thing that I'll say, I could probably come up with a couple more though, is that I'm a little concerned about the time. We went from, I think we had an hour and a half set aside a couple of years ago for each meeting, and we had four of those. So we ended up with six hours altogether of committee meetings. Then we cut it down to an hour and 15 minutes. And, and I got to tell you, especially for ed services, maybe business services is the same way. But I know with ed services, an hour and 15 minutes, we ran over several times. And I don't want that to happen again. I mean, I feel like the committee meetings, we should be comfortable if we go over five minutes, no big deal. If we go over 10 minutes, it's not the end of the world. We, that's the place where we want to have a very free-flowing conversation about what we think about. You know, the, the example with John Volendorf and the scheduling at SPAS is a great example. That is not, that has been a wonderful presentation. We followed that along. It's been, I think, we think he's been here three times now to talk about that, and it's always been at committee. So we really see, we're not, we're not scaring the public yet about what might be coming at SPAS, and it's very much a work in progress. That's not appropriate for the full board meeting. So for a lot of different reasons, and the timing being one of them, I, you know, I like the fact that we've been able to keep our committee meetings to roughly an hour fifteen. It hasn't gone too late, but if we try to do all of it in one night, you know, that's six hours shrunk down to whatever, three hours, what are we cutting out? And that leads me to, I guess, my last point, which is something that I hope that we'll take up when we do our retreat, is board input on what might be occurring at committee meetings. I know when I was business services chair and ed services chair, we had very robust meetings to talk about what was going to be on the agenda of those committees. And, and I, I, now I'm, you know, it's changed. I'm not chair of either of those committees anymore, but I know that's changed, and I'm hoping that that's a topic that we can take up at our retreat. So I actually see committee meetings as robust, and if they go a little bit longer, that's okay. But if we're all getting here together, we're not going to want to sit for, you know, four hours. We're just not, we're going to be burned out. And so I, I'm really in favor of Jeff's comments with regards to just keeping the status quo.
See, and I, I guess...
I misinterpreted what I said.
Go ahead. Do you want to, do you want to clarify?
I just want to clarify that. Yeah, I, I was just saying that I want to continue to have presentations first at the committee, and then we decide at, at the committee whether it should be brought forward. I wasn't stating that we shouldn't merge, I think we should merge the HR with business services because we just haven't met, and the meetings are 10 minutes, you know, three times a year. So that's not going to impact business services meeting at all.
Well, I think it's been more than 10 minutes, but...
Well, there were a couple.
Chris has asked to go first. Chris asked to go first.
No, I just want a clarification of, you're talking about business services and HR as one committee?
Correct.
And would you have four board members? Or what would the structure of that be versus what it is now with board members and committee and community members? What would that structure be?
Yeah, I'm suggesting you keep the same structure. You know, at a minimum, if we, if we do nothing, I think it makes sense to combine business services and HR. If we have... If we have three committees instead of four, that makes sense. We can still run them over two days, we can do whatever the board chooses. We talked about this last year, and administratively, we talk about it all the time. Makes no sense to have a separate HR committee and a separate business services committee, because they go hand in hand. That said, I'm not suggesting we change the format at all. We still would have committees, I probably confuse the conversation with my own thoughts of committee of the whole.
Yeah.
Because I've had, I've worked in the committee the whole structure before, and I enjoy that. That worked out very well for me. That said, I work for you, you don't work for me. So we'll run any structure that you want. At a minimum, I think it makes sense to combine HR and business services, our cabinet would agree to that as well. And if you want to keep three, you certainly can keep three, I'm just throwing out ideas as it relates to being as efficient as we can.
Amy?
All right. So I support the ed services being one committee and business services and HR being another committee, policy as needed amongst both. Are you looking for a motion, then, to approve that change?
Yeah, let me just, let's just update Judy...
That's just a question. Oh, I wasn't done, but go for it.
Oh, no, go ahead. So right now, we're discussing the possibility of combining HR and business services as a committee, and then eliminating policy and ledge, having policy items fall to either ed services or HR, business services as appropriate, and have then, on each of those committees, a standing item with respect to legislation. So that if there's something related to WASB, something that's happening with the legislature, something advocacy-wise, either ed services or business services slash HR, that that would be something that committee would be discussing each month. So, I'm sorry, Amy.
So then, to continue, along with what Trish was saying, is I think that keeping them on separate nights would allow for the presentations and conversations that would need to happen, and then not limiting them, you have to be done in hour fifteen, because we have another committee following you. So if we have ed services still on Monday and business still on Tuesday with HR, then everybody can have the time they need to get the conversations and the presentations done. That would be what I would think would work best for the committee and pub, board.
Jeff?
I like the concept, except I would be eliminated from Tuesday nights, so I could only make half of them, the Monday night meeting. That's why I only serve on Monday night committees, because that's, I don't have Tuesday nights. And then I was going to address your concern about, you know, sometimes there is a big presentation, and we could do one of two things. You could keep HR as like, you know, ad hoc, or when you need to get together, you get together to deal with a certain issue, but typically, there's a vote that has to be taken. And that's it, you know, and then it goes up to the full board. So a lot of the things that we have to deal with are very brief in nature, and that vote can be taken again at another committee. But if we do have something that's really important, like teachers-on-call presentation, we can either add 15 or 20 minutes onto the back end of the last meeting and have it as needed, or, you know, again, schedule something on a completely different day, if it's important. So I think we could easily accommodate, you know, your concerns, and still combine those two committees, you know, the HR and business services.
On one night?
On one night, yeah. Well, yeah, right. Actually, as the same committee, and again, as needed, if you need to extend it, extend it.
And then, another question, what do you do about citizen board members? We won't have, we have six citizen board members right now.
We have, currently, there are five, we have one that's provided a resignation.
Okay. So five, we should have six, because there should be two on each committee. So are we going to cut that down? I mean, if we have everybody...
If we do three...
It would be cut down.
I know, I know we don't have any, we have two on ed services, two on business services, two on policy and ledge.
Currently, we'd have, then, if we went to this new system, then we'd have four. We would have two serving on ed services, we'd have two serving on business services slash HR.
Barb?
I think when we shortened our time from an hour and a half to an hour and 15 or whatever, the agreement anyway was, if the first one runs over, that's so what. I think people can wait 10 minutes if ed services is late. And, you know, I think that could be, and to consider our staff, our administration, you know, rather than hanging around for two nights, have it be a one-night shot.
I really like the idea, I mean, I really like the idea of one night, because I really think it affords board members the opportunity to be present for all presentations, if they're able to stay for that second meeting. Also, again, staff is able to be there for both meetings. If we're looking at what we're doing, I mean, realistically, thinking about the reality, I would assume we would run business services first. I think that that is, that's a meeting that's relatively self-contained, and Tom will give us an hour, or he'll give us an hour and 15 minutes, and sometimes he may need less, he may need more, but, and then we would have the ability to have ed services as the second meeting, because we all recognize that that's the meeting that sometimes needs more time. We also, I want to note, are really trying, from this perspective of a board calendar, we're trying to, as we move forward, more proactively manage our business, so that we're, so that we're not putting everything on a board meeting, but we're able to more effectively manage presentations that we need to see throughout the course of the year, throughout the course of the year. And I think that that's, that that's part of it, if we're upfront, aware of the things that we want to be addressing, and that we need to be looking at annually or biannually, that we then structure, we will need to be more proactive about structuring our calendar around that in a more efficient way, which I think, you know, because some months, we have very little on the calendar, and some months, we have an overabundance, and that isn't necessarily needed. Mike?
Question for Craig. Now that we've gone through all the policies, we have a large volume of policies, what do you see as, what's the future look like for policy work? Obviously, you know, for the next year or two, there's probably not a lot of policies to look, that need to be reevaluated, but is there going to come a day that, you know, now we've got a thick book full of out-of-date policies? I mean, do they need kind of periodic review, or only review if we're having a problem with a policy?
Typically, what happens, we get updates from either WASB or from the state indicating legal issues. And that's, that tends to be very clear, we make those changes, that occurs, that's, you know, that's always going to occur. It's not a tremendous amount, there will be new policies that come up, and that would be an opportunity to send it to one of the committees in terms of creating that. Typically, the administration creates a template committee, if it's a, if it's a business services policy, for example, they would look at that. And then, one of the reasons we went with NEOLA, they continue, their service continues to look at the policies.
Got you.
And bring forward concerns and issues as we continue to move forward. Because otherwise, you get, and that's what happened here, and it happened in, you know, lots of places I've worked, you go through all the work that we did, you put the policies back up on the shelf, and you don't bring it back until you have an issue. And you pull it out and look at that and say, oh, boy, that's a dated policy. The reason we use NEOLA, they provide a service to keep ahead of that.
So based on that, having two committees to review policies, it's probably very doable, and they can keep up with the changes.
And then you have the people at the committee. You know, you have, you'll have Beth and Tom at that business services, HR committee when there's questions. When we did the policy, there were all kinds of questions that our administration went through, that we had to pull, because we needed more information from specific cabinet members. And, you know, and, let's not change for the sake of changing, and maybe that's what this, this conversation turns into. You know, we can make a change, if we separate committees for a year, we can always go back next year and do something else. And I'll ask the question here, I mean, there's been some conversation, I think some people agreeing on some things, and maybe some people not. Are we okay just the way we are? And if we're okay with the things just the way they are, let's just keep the things the way we are.
So I just want to note, the main reason we hired NEOLA was not to update all our policies, like to create all our policies updated for one time. It was for them to, on an ongoing basis, do that for us, because we don't have the expertise within our district to be able to keep on top of that. I mean, we have different pots of people everywhere who are having to do that. And the benefit of NEOLA is, that's their whole job. I mean, they monitor whatever policies are being updated, changed, on an ongoing basis. And for the people who subscribe to them, which is actually the vast majority of districts in our state right now, they just send us the policy. You know, they say, okay, here the law changed, here's what the recommended policy is, take a look at it, now adapt it to your local district, but they're giving us a starting point. And before we had them, that wasn't the case. It was, something would come into our district, and then it was a scramble to figure out who was responsible for it, and then from the ground up, they had to create it. So from my understanding, we will have very, there will be very minimal policy, need for policy and ledge to meet with respect to policy updates moving forward, and they're better handled at another committee.
We also went with NEOLA because there was a consistency in terms of an outside source looking at our policies, and eliminating some of the influence of newly-elected board members and new superintendents that come in, that like to create policy around what they think is important. And over time, policies get created each, every time there's a new superintendent, you run the risk of that.
So I don't know if it was Judy...
Judy first.
Or Amy.
Amy.
Oh, I've had a round, if you have...
All right, Judy?
No, sorry for being late. As I am stepping in, I personally like the idea of having the committees on one night, to be able to actually attend and listen to all of those, everything that's going on.
Jeff?
Then I had one question. Do we have to wait a year to make any changes to the committees?
No.
No, we can do it tonight.
Okay, yeah. Well, what I'm saying is that if we get in halfway through the year and decide that we need more committee time, we can always reinstitute another committee. Okay, so we can always go back.
Amy?
Well, I was going to make the motion, just to keep this thing moving, because we've all had a talk, to reorganize the committees, so that business services and human resources committee is combined, meeting first on Monday night at 6:30, followed by ed services at 7:30.
Second.
Business services moves things along, we get business done quick.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any questions or additional discussion?
Do we need a second motion to eliminate the policy and ledge?
I'll include in my motion to eliminate policy and legislation committee.
And I'll second that.
And to include those matters on the appropriate...
Yeah. Wordsmith.
Okay, do you have that whole thing?
Got that.
Okay. Any questions or further discussion?
I really like the idea, and I think we've made some changes in the past. I think, I would love to have it on one night. I think it's really time-efficient. If we have to change it, I think we should try it, I really do, I really liked it right away. For me, canceling HR as many times, I just think that's not productive, and the policies the way they are, I really like it, so I would support it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor with aye? Aye. Aye? Posed?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. So now we are moving into election of chairs for standing board committees. And so I will first ask for a recommendation with respect to the position of business services slash HR chair.
You want us to nominate someone?
Yep.
I'll nominate Amy Daly.
Do I have a second?
Do you need a second on that?
You don't need a second.
I don't need a second? Oh, that's right, nominations, that's right.
Can they call it?
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, we have the motion on the floor to nominate Amy to serve as the chair of the business services slash HR committee. All those in favor with aye? Aye. Aye? Posed? Motion carries. All right, we are moving on to recommendation for nominations for educational services committee chair.
I'm nominating Barb Portson.
We have Barb Portson nominated. Do we have any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? So we have nomination for Barb Portson to serve as the chair of the educational services committee chair. All those in favor with aye? Aye. Aye? Posed? Motion carries. We are now moving on to appointment of members for standing board committees. So...
It kind of doesn't matter.
Well, yeah, we need...
All in one night, everybody's here, right?
No, but we need people on the committees, so...
You're not required to, I mean, you don't serve on the committee, so some people may not be here for the second committee.
Right. So I guess we're looking at, I guess, based on the interest sheet, maybe that's...
I need you to hear on for all of them.
Yep. You stepping up here on for everyone. Recommitted.
For giving those...
You did a...
Yeah.
I'm going to be...
You want to chair those.
Yeah, so if you're right in the chair, let's right in the chair. Just right up Barb. And if the rest of us are here anyway, it's not your committee, and you sit out there, we don't participate in the discussion, correct?
Correct, I would assume, otherwise it would turn into just a committee meeting.
For all.
And they don't, I mean, I would assume, it's like, this general public at this meeting, they don't have the opportunity to ask questions, that's the committee's job.
Or ask before.
Board members that are not on a specific committee, but are in the audience...
Do not purchase.
Do not participate. The value is, you're hearing, you're hearing the conversation.
Everybody hear that? So the reality is, we're going to have eight spots, we've got eight board members eligible to serve on committees, so we'll be looking at everyone to be on one committee.
Then don't, yeah, then take me out for business services.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the other members express service wherever needed, in the survey.
And if anyone wants to take either one of mine, I've served on all the committees over the years, so anyone can take my spot, I'm happy to sit in the audience. So if someone else that isn't up there, is there anyone, who are we missing on?
We want to structure that so...
You're only on one.
You're on one committee.
Right.
But everybody's on a committee, except for Meg's president.
Which one would you rather be on?
So Jeff's not on a committee yet.
I serve at the pleasure of the board, wherever you want me to.
And Ann's, Ann's on both committees.
So you've got to be on one.
I'd indicate a dollar.
I would take ed services.
There you go.
And then, Mike, you've got to make a decision.
I'd rather be on business services.
Good choice.
Okay.
Chris, you've got to make a...
What's starting, business is starting?
6:30, yep.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I really love ed services. I'll go ahead and go with business. I'll go ahead and go with Business.
Trish?
Wherever you need me, it's fine.
Well, we've got Trish, and we've got Jeff and Judy.
Judy, what do you prefer?
I have no preference, so. I'll go with Ed Services.
Jeff?
You know, I've been serving on all those other committees negotiating. I'll continue to do that, because then everybody can get on these two committees. I'll be at these meetings anyway, but, because I like to know.
What we need for.
You have to, we have to.
You have to be on one.
You have to be on one of them.
Have to be on one.
Yes.
Because you're not on that straight. Uh, Business, put me on Business.
Okay, so there's four, and then Trish is on Ed Services.
Okay.
Now, Trish, if you'd rather be on Business, I'll switch with you.
I'm fine, that's, this is.
Is that work?
I'm offering.
All right, I move to approve the board committee members as on the whiteboard.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so we have Ed Services, Barbara will chair with Judy, Ann, and Trish. And Business, HR, Amy will chair with Chris, and Jeff, and Mike. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're moving into appointment of board members to ad hoc committees.
When you were up doing that, that it was mentioned that board members who are not on the committees, but who are sitting in the audience, are not able to participate at all. So I just want to make that noted.
Okay, so now we will move into ad hoc committees. So we have the Boston School Forest.
Barb, I know you really like this one. Are you still interested in?
Yeah.
I nominate Barb Portson for the Boston School Forest Committee.
Okay, any other nominations?
Meg, you were interested in that?
No, but I'm, if I'm President, then I, then I don't do anything else. So, yeah, yeah. So I don't have to call for three nominations for this. So if there aren't any others, we have a nomination for Barb. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? So Barb will serve on Boston School Forest. We have CISA V delegate.
Now, before we get into the nominations on this one, last year I was the delegate, and I had come back with a report of seeing if somebody was interested in serving on the CISA V board, because we are the largest district in our CISA group, and we have no representation. So if whoever is nominated for this has interest in that, it was kind of discussed by the board last year that we'd go along with that if you were interested in serving and being on the board. But that was just a refresher from last year.
How many meetings this past?
I don't know. They have the one.
The CISA meeting as a board member, or as the delegate?
No, no, as a board member.
They meet monthly. The delegate, I think, is one meeting.
The delegate is one meeting.
And then it's through the delegates that they look towards new board members, I believe?
Right, and you have to, so I'm not eligible, because I'm up for an election year. But you have to be in like your second year, so that you have a full year yet before. Because how the CISA calendar lines up with how our election calendar is, I would be reelected or not before their calendar would end.
Okay, so that would apply to all three of you for next year?
What?
Whoever's up for reelection next year.
Then you, you can be the CISA V delegate, but you couldn't be?
On the board.
On the board.
So is there anyone that?
What, do they meet in Portage?
Um, they rotate where they meet.
Oh, okay.
No. Is anyone interested in that?
What nights do they meet, Amy?
I don't know. I only went to the delegate meeting.
It's, it's an interesting.
Yeah, I, I did it one year, but that was about four years ago, I think.
So you're interested?
Yeah, I would.
Okay, are we okay with?
Yep, I'm nominating Jeff.
I'm really okay with that.
All right, do I have a second? I've got Amy nominated, Jeff, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Yeah, it's an interesting situation, because we are the largest, but the reality is, we probably.
Use the least services, because we're the largest.
Because we have more resources. Okay, we are moving into C, which is District Negotiations Committee. Historically, that's been two board members. There was a time when there were three board members. We are in a really, I think, optimistic, positive place with respect to our negotiations. This is an opportunity for board members to have that experience. So I guess I'm looking to board members to indicate their interest. And possibly board members who maybe haven't had that experience in the past, who might want to be involved, or.
I, I would like to be on the committee.
Chris would like to be on the committee?
And I will only if someone else doesn't want to serve, because I would.
So Jeff has indicated an interest. Is there anybody else that would be interested? Anybody else interested? Okay, so could I have a motion?
Move to appoint Chris and Jeff to the Negotiations Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item D, Technology Steering Committee.
Served on that before, I would be happy to do that.
I nominate Trish.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second with respect to Trish?
I don't need a second.
Anybody else interested? All right, all those in favor of Trish serving on the Technology Steering Committee with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Trish, you're on that. And then we have the WASB Delegate Legislative Liaison.
I nominate Mike.
I'd second that.
You don't need a second.
I know, but I wanted to. I wanted to anyway.
I already thirded it.
Okay.
Thirded it?
So, so that is both, that Mike's role is both being the delegate down at Madison, but it will also be to help us stay apprised of what's happening down in Madison. All those in favor with Mike serving on that role with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Motion carries. I just want to note that as we move forward in the year, there may be other opportunities for board members to be involved in ad hoc committees, and we will do those as necessary. So moving into item 12, Consent Agenda. We have the minutes for the April 8, 2019 board meeting. We have. Did everybody get the minutes? I don't have, it's not on my list, but I also didn't. Did everybody else get the minutes?
I'm not sure what your question is, please, Baker?
It's not, there's no.
They're not, they're not attached.
I have my view minutes link on my printout.
Are, are you logged in as a board member? Because the public can't see them yet. There's a map that's booted.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Do you have to be logged in?
I just logged into the public site.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we have the April 8, 2019 school board meeting minutes. We have the recommendations for employment. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, which one and which one?
Yeah, I give it to Barb, I've had a good run.
All right, so Barb, motioned and Amy seconded.
Goodness.
All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Motion carries. Moving into Business Services, we have A, Approval of Signature Facsimile Resolutions.
Move to approve the Continued Signature Facsimile Use Resolution and the New Signature Facsimile Resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Again, just to note, this is just to have people who need to be signing what they need to be signing to be able to have that electronic version. So, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Motion carries. Okay, general information, we just have the meeting dates, times, locations. Our next meeting is May 13. We also have a meeting June 10. Heidi will be sending out information or a Google inquiry with respect to the board retreat, which we will be looking, again this year, to try to do one of those last couple weeks in June.
And I, the folks over at SPAS desperately want to know if you're going to attend graduation, and if you need help with your gown and regalia. So if you could get back to me or to Doreen, she sent you an email, I think you probably got it this week, and she really, really needs to know. So if you could make a decision, even just give me a call, and I'll pass that information on. That'd be great.
Okay. And also with respect to the other, the other graduations as well, and the retirement banquet. If people haven't responded, be sure and do that. Yes, yes, and apprenticeship breakfast, yes. All right, moving into item 15, Human Resources, Teacher Contracts. And is Beth here? Do you want to just come up and? This is a matter that's on the agenda. Because of timeliness of it, I think Beth will explain kind of why we thought it was important for it to be on tonight's agenda.
Right, so we want to have them distributed by May 15. That's the deadline for distribution, and then returned by June 15. So there's 512 teacher contracts names in front of you. The templates themselves, the, the two templates that we have included in the packet, one is for a partial contract, and one is for the full-time teacher contract. No significant changes there. Any questions?
New contracts only allow for? No, I'm sorry, that's a different topic. I was going to ask, ask a health insurance question, but that's not part of the contracts, never mind, I apologize.
So, and just to note, right now the contracts include the current rate of pay.
Correct.
In the event that negotiations provide an increase, that will be something that then will need to be amended with respect to that contract. But we're required by law to have these contracts distributed by May 15.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Wait, is there a motion in here?
No.
To approve teacher contracts as presented.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Contracts are approved. All right, now we are moving into item 16, which is Closed Session. And it's going to take me a little bit, because we have a few of them. We are going into Closed Session under Wisconsin Statutes 1985 Part N1 Part N C, Considering Employment Promotion Compensation or Performance Evaluation Data of Any Public Employee Over Which The Governmental Body Has Jurisdiction or Exercises Responsibility Specifically to Consider the Hire of an Administrator and Final Non-Renewal Notices. We are looking to go into Closed Session under 1985 Part N1 Part N C, Considering Employment Promotion Compensation or Performance Evaluation Data of Any Public Employee Over Which The Governmental Body Has Jurisdiction or Exercises Responsibility Specifically to Consider the Resignation of a School District Employee. We are looking to go into Closed Session under Wisconsin Statute 1985 Part N1 Part N E, Deliberating or Negotiating the Purchasing of Public Properties, the Investing of Public Funds, or Conducting Other Specified Public Business Whenever Competitive or Bargaining Reasons Require a Closed Session Specifically for the Purpose of Discussing Bargaining for the July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020 Contract Agreements. And we are looking to go into Closed Session under 120.13 Part N1 Part N C, Expulsion of a Junior High Student. Do I have a motion? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Motion by Amy, second by Jeff, and could you call the rule?
Ms. Rannell?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yep.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Mr. Cantos?
Yep.
Sorry.
I'm going to update your next.
Ms. Fang? Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll take 10 minutes to get the room together for Closed Session.